Thank you all for your attention. I would now like to present a short video of ACCA's mission, impact and journey over the years.
What we have is the pace of change and the degree of adoption of change.
What is the implication on ethics? What is the implication on business?
We can't just continue to operate as we've done for the past 20 years.
If we don't change now, then it's too late.
ACCA has led the world in opening up opportunities to professional life, but we never rest on our laurels and there is more, more to do.
The issues that we see playing out around the world is a function of significant increases in inequality. What we need to do is ask policymakers to take a much more longer term view, particularly in terms of education, healthcare and infrastructure.
That call to action is so important to all of us, including the accounting profession.
Accountants are perfectly placed in their position to have that real meaningful impact.
The role of the accountancy profession is evolving.
We're talking now of environmental sustainability and governance as opposed to just analyzing numbers.
We speak up, we hold businesses and the public sector and ourselves to a higher standard.
The accounting profession has really provided the guidance to the innovators.
Everyone is embracing the diversity and redefining the role of the finance function.
The next generation will be attracted by a sense of purpose.
It will become a more aspirational profession for young people as that ethical and trusted advisor.
A better world to me is where businesses actually serve the needs of society.
A better world where everyone will embrace accountability to protect the planet.
Helping businesses to develop in a sustainable way.
So that the decisions that we take as a result serve for the betterment of everybody.
Good evening and welcome once again on behalf of the Institute of Directors. It is my pleasure and honor to welcome you all, our very esteemed and distinguished IOD members, IOD fellows, associates and our distinguished guests and IOD India global family. The Institute of Directors is hosting this very special evening in association with ACCA, Association of Chartered Certified Accountants and international body of professional accountants, representing a global community of 247,000 members and 526,000 future members based in 181 countries. The theme for this evening is building future boards navigating through global economic challenges. In today's fast-paced and interconnected world, businesses are confronted with an ever-evolving landscape of economic challenges. To address these challenges, corporate boards play a pivotal role in steering organizations towards future which is successful and sustainable. The theme encapsulates the essence of how boards are adapting to the complex economic forces shaping the business world. Tonight, we are honored and delighted that Ms. Helen Brand, OBE, the Chief Executive of ACCA is among us who will be delivering a keynote address. We also have amongst us Dr. Aruna Sharma, retired IRS officer, independent member, macrofinance institutional network, MFIN, former member, digitization committee, RBI, former secretary, Ministry of Steel, Government of India, former secretary, Ministry of Electronics and IT, Government of India. We also have with us Mr. Shiv Shiva Kumar, operating partner, Advent International, former group executive president, corporate strategy and business development, Aditya Bala Group, former chairman and CEO, India Region PepsiCo. This will be followed by a panel discussion and we have five distinguished speakers joining us for this and they are Ms. Helen Brand, Mr. Siddhavaidya Said, Mr. Anil Kumar, Ms. Kalpana Jain and Dr. Amit Srin. Ladies and gentlemen, without further ado, may I please request Mr. Ashok Kapoor, Director General, Institute of Directors, India to kindly grace the dice. Please put your hands together and welcome on stage, Mr. Ashok Kapoor. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in extending a warm welcome on stage to our guest of honor, Dr. Aruna Sharma, retired IRS officer, independent member, macrofinance institute network, MFIN, former member, digitization committee, RBI, former secretary, Ministry of Steel, Government of India, former secretary, Ministry of Electronics and IT, Government of India. I would request Mr. Kapoor to please present Dr. Aruna Sharma with the bouquet to welcome her here. Thank you so much ma'am for joining us. I would now like to invite on stage, Mr. Shiv Shiva Kumar, operating partner, Advent International, former group executive president, corporate strategy and business development, Aditya Bala Group. A round of applause for Mr. Shiv Shiva Kumar making his way up on the stage. He is former chairman and CEO, India Region PepsiCo. Thank you so much sir for coming here. Now please join me in extending a warm welcome to our distinguished keynote speaker, Ms. Helen Brand, OBE, chief executive ACCA, who has traveled all the way from UK to be with us. A big round of applause for Ms. Helen Brand coming up on stage. I would request Mr. Ashok Kapoor to please present Pam with the bouquet. Thank you. May I now please request Mr. Ashok Kapoor, Director General, Institute of Directors, to deliver the welcome address. Mr. Ashok Kapoor was a former officer of the Indian Administrative Service, 1967 branch. He has served in the government in various capacities, including secretary and magistrate of various districts. During 1992-94, he was appointed the leader of the Indian delegation to the UN Conference on Biological Warfare. In September 1991, he was appointed as Joint Secretary, Ministry of Civil Supplies and Food and Science and Technology, Government of India. A round of applause for Mr. Ashok Kapoor.
Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests and speakers. On behalf of IOD India, I have great pleasure in welcoming all of you to this special evening session, celebrating our association with the ACCA, the Association of Chartered Certified Accountants of UK. For more than 12 years now, IOD and ACCA have collaborated to improve good governance practices. We are especially delighted to welcome Ms. Helen Brand, OBE, Chief Executive of the ACCA in the United Kingdom, in whose honor we have all assembled here today. The topical theme for today's discussion is building future boards navigating through global economic challenges. This is a critical and timely conversation that brings together a distinguished group of experts and thought leaders to share their insights, experiences and strategies for steering organizations through the turbulent waters of the global economy. Expert described it, "We all are living in a highly VUCA world, a world that is volatile, uncertain, complex and ambiguous." Volatility represents the rapid and unpredictable fluctuations in the global economy. Today, the world is a global village. Fluctuation, recent fluctuations in the Silicon Valley Bank and the credit space banks demonstrates this volatility. Today, leaders overnight can become laggards and laggards overnight can become leaders. As happened with SVB and Credit Suisse. Uncertainty arises from political instability, shifting regulations, trade dispute and unprecedented technological advancements. Complexity refers to the intricacies and interdependence within the global economy. Frightening pace of change, as Peter Drucker puts it very aptly. Earlier, policy dictated technology. Today, a time has come when technology is increasingly dictating policy. This is a question to ponder. Ambiguity manifests itself as regulatory changes, shifting market dynamics and evolving consumer behavior, patterns that experts, that no expert can anticipate. For example, real estate, experts tell us, has become unreal estate. Why? Because round the globe, real estate is the main collateral of banks and lending institutions. Price fluctuations, rapid plight fluctuations in real estate have made it into an unreal estate. The journey through this complex landscape will require adaptability, strategic planning, continuing risk management and collaborative efforts from all stakeholders. Friends, I would like to share with you all the latest IMF Global Financial Stability Report of 2023. It has warned that financial stability risks have increased rapidly as the resilience of the global financial system has faced a number of tests. Recent turmoil in the banking sector is a powerful reminder of the challenges posed by the interaction between tighter monetary and financial conditions and the buildup in vulnerabilities since the global financial crisis, ever since the global financial crises of 2008. Large emerging markets have so far avoided adverse spillovers, but smaller and more fragile economies continue to confront worsening debt sustainability trends. For the first time in history, both borrowers and lenders are often at a loss. Borrowers often, very often can't repay and lenders lose their precious capital. It's happening all too often. It is a new phenomenon confronting all of us. We wonder what is the solution. Today, policy decisions made by corporate boards not only shape the future of individual companies, but also increasingly influence the broader global economic landscape. This makes it paramount that we explore innovative and effective ways to build resilient, forward-thinking and agile boards that can navigate these complex economic challenges that lie ahead. This leads us to the emerging gospel or mantra that is ESG. Friends, ESG is good for business and integral to making the transition to renewables. But manipulation of supply chains, thanks to geopolitical calculations, is a potential spoiler. Most conversations about ESG, the environment, social and governance framework, center around operational aspects rather than the spirit of what ESG stands for. Investor critics often gauge ESG investments through numerical comparisons, contrasting with the corporate's non-ESG investments. This comparison is a reality today, staring us all squarely in our face. ESG is driven by the compelling cost efficiencies of renewables, to cite an example. As the cost to use renewable energy sources reduces, the silver lining in the dark clouds is dropping below that of fossil energy, fossil oil energy, a significant shift is underway. This reflects the undeniable economic advantages of renewables. Unlike fossil fuels, which are all the time prone to inflationary impacts, renewable energy costs remain relatively stable and are largely immune to global price fluctuations. This is where ESG comes into focus. ESG is not just useful, it is also commercially prudent. Regulators and businesses alike will concede that ESG is the basis of sustainability of not only humanity, but as much as viability of industrial growth and its financial implications. To this end, I again specially welcome Ms. Helen Brand, OBE of ACCA, as the anchor said, all the way she has come from UK to give us her insights and skills into the problems facing all of us. Our guests of honor today, Dr. Aruna Sharma, she's a very worthy colleague of mine. She was the former secretary, Steel. And Mr. Shiv Shankar. I also extend a warm welcome to our esteemed panelists, Mr. Said, Ms. Kalpana Jain, Dr. Anil Kumar, Mr. Harpreet Singh and Dr. Amit Srin, who spared their valuable time to be here and participate in today's deliberations. We live in a world that is interconnected and ever-evolving and today's discussions, we are sure, will help us chart a new course towards boards that are not only equipped to navigate the challenges of today, the great financial challenges, but are also prepared to thrive in the ever-evolving dynamics of the global economy of tomorrow. Thank you friends.
Thank you, Mr. Kapoor, for the warm welcome. You've really set the tone for the evening today. A quick introduction of our guest of honor, Dr. Aruna Sharma. An IRS officer of the 1982 batch, she's an avid practitioner of development economics and has successfully employed her craft in her professional career. A catalyst of positive change, she has played a pivotal role in chalking out development-related blueprints and ensuring that its benefits percolate to all sections of the society. Steeped in traditions, she's a dance and music aficionado. We are truly delighted to have Dr. Sharma with us. I request Dr. Sharma to please address the audience and I request all of you to please give her a huge round of applause.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let me invite Ms. Helen to our country and this conference. Mr. Shiv Shankar and of course, a wonderful introduction done by Dr. Kapoor. So that has set the ball rolling and made the job much easier for us. Definitely, the topic we are focusing today is building future boards and navigating through global economic challenges. One thing which has happened in pandemic is a change of path. What was happening was looking global, suddenly the insights of all the countries and companies was becoming to look inside and see the profits of the country. So if you look at the board, the policies changed. The various kind of duties for imports that were put by the countries, without paying any respect, whether they are WTO compliant or not compliant, were imposed. Because everybody was looking at revival of the industries in their own country. So that's on the policy front. What happened in the composition of the boards and that is very important. For a country like India, which is highly populated, where providing employment is a big challenge, the big companies where corporate governance is there, everybody want to drawing board to automate whichever, whatever place in the company is possible. In the sense, if I put it very bluntly, it is going to reduce the employment opportunities. That is going to happen and this is for the corporate board to understand that when their job is to sort of protect the interest of the shareholder and more and more technology and automation is going to come, the drawing board is very important and the corporate governance for future has to understand that very clearly. What is important is to fulfill the social cause. The S part of the ESG is the value chain, the supply chain, which comes through the small, medium enterprises. That handholding the corporate has to understand by equipping, by handholding them, by bringing it and that part will take care of the employment needs of the youth or the demographic dividend not being wasted. So a corporate board is with a very contrasting two kinds of responsibility. In future, one, identify the places to be automated, use the best of the technology. Number two, handhold the supply chain both ways, backward and front, towards the market so that they become on par in quality protection as needed by the main corporate as well as ensure that the employment responsibility is sort of divided among them. So it's not sought for the company itself which is expanding. Another challenge which is coming up is go green. You know, it's very fashionable, but nobody has a definition of what is green. You know, everybody in the world, we are fighting for it, trying to understand. Is it just emission? Is it the entire input chain? Is it the how we are going to calculate it? How we are going to stamp it? How we are going to go ahead with it? Again, pandemic pushed us back. What was thought and rightly said by Mr. Kapoor, that the fossil fuels were a complete no-no. And suddenly you had in Europe, in US, all coal mines were opened up. 50 years, there is no looking back from coal. This understanding, the corporate boards have to understand in India, that as you are slowly going towards the non-renewable energy or renewable energy, as your source or if you are changing the input, you have to understand that coal is going to be your major fuel. In whatever sector of industry you're working where coal is being used. And if that be there, the focus again changes as to how we capture the emissions. And that is very, very important, that it is not, it's very easy to say no coal, but very impossible to implement. So it is very important, the governance to be updated, to place the finger on the right problem what you're facing so that your solution is something which is practicable, which is executionable and which is going to also fulfill the benefit of going green. So this kind of a combination of thinking is very, very important as we are moving ahead. And today, if you look at the world, the way, the way the whole world is operating and the corporate governance is working, it is very important in the board to have a combination of all kinds of experts. You need a finance expert, you need from your chartered accountants, very, very vital these days for any of the companies or in the board to have. You need the subject experts and you need some visionary persons. That combination you must encourage in whichever board is being formed. Whether, and today, these days, even the promoter company is looking for the corporate governance. They are no longer the Lala company, what we used to call, that Lala says and it's executed. No, it's very professional there and of course, where the corporate board or it's a corporate governed company, of course it is there. So this kind of a combination is coming up and that kind of a thinking is coming up. So as a member of a board or a future board, this combination should also be encouraged so that the discussions are very, very meaningful and you are able to see what is happening. Plus also trigger the flaws in the policymaking. This is very important when you are working upon it because there could be some policies which is going to actually hinder the entire sector. And who better can navigate it, flag it, propagate it than the board members who have little bit at stake being a member of the board of a particular company, but more as a sector specialist to flag it out and to bring it in the public domain and bring out that kind of a change in the policy work when you're working on it. And this is happening very rapidly when the use of the information technology is being used. Because the technology usage, the consumer adoption is way ahead than how it is reacting or how the policymaking is happening. You just see a complete transformation in the consumer behavior that is happening. So your products, your manufacturing has to move accordingly. Another thing of the governance model I will say and which I observed personally, whichever company invested on their employees during the tough time of pandemic was the upper part of the K. They all recovered fastest. And the companies which went for not taking care of good governance of their own employees, pink slips, reduction of pay and everything, they were on the lower part of the K. So that clearly flags what is the responsibility of the board in these tough times. It is not just profit. Okay, your profit margin must have come down, but that is the time to be together. It's not an opportunity to clean up or to cut down the excess baggage that can follow later. You can identify, but not when the times are difficult. That helps the governance of the company, that helps and flags the commitment of the company and definitely that has been a major responsibility. You can look through many examples and you will see that difference that those companies were on the upper part of the K. They had a V recovery, absolute V recovery when we went ahead with it. What is becoming very important today is the recession or what the financial thing, what was pointed out by this. There are two kinds of reactions which is coming from the banks. When there is a need to give credit, it is becoming an expensive credit. Or with the kind of fear of default and banker being held responsible, what is shocking and at least I'll say in India today, the reverse repo rate, you are having more and more deposits with the RBI than the liquidity being used for lending. Now this is shocking. What is the real job of the bank? It is to lend, to handhold, to trigger the economy, to ensure that more and more money is floated to multiply, whether in manufacturing, investment, research, wherever it has to be. But that is not happening, it's like on hold. And this is where the corporates have to work ahead to ensure that the expansion of the company is going ahead. And another change in behavior that has happened in the CapEx investment is the good big companies are thinking to save and invest and expand than taking credit. So this kind of a mentality is coming that put your own resource at least 50% and let 50% be taken on credit, then you are viable. Otherwise, with the high credit rates, with no surety of what level of credit rates and your ratings are going to affect, how the banks are going to react on that, whether you will end up into a bankrupt company or declare a bankrupt company. All these are having an effect and that's where the corporate governance has to have a vigil on the finances. Many a times, the audit committee, if you look at it of the corporates is, at least you know, maybe whosoever is the chair is steering it or just the numbers are being seen. No, that is the place to have an in-depth look for the corporate to have for these tendencies that whether you are building up for the future investments of your expansion plan. Are you, is your rating improving day by day? Are you getting a cheaper credit because of your better rating? Where are you moving it? How are your finances? Are you wasting or are you productively using it? All these things are equally important, how you are moving ahead into the entire cycle. And that's where, if you look at it of the corporate board governance, these committees are very important and now these days, you also have a risk management committee for that only. Because who knows better than you, the possible risks that company is going to have. So these committees are not a formality. That's the single point I would like to make here. These committees are with a purpose for the board because you bring in as the members of the board, the vast knowledge, the vast experience, diversified knowledge. And that is what makes the difference when you are going ahead. Today, you have these challenges in front of you and you, you looked at it also. The way going green is concerned, maybe your organization, IOD, can help to define it. Because how do you give credits to the supply chain? How it is going to happen? Because if you look at the renewable energy, it is going in the same grid from where you are tapping down. So what percentage of credit you get because what energy you are using has come from multiple sorts of making that energy. It's not a one is to one kind of ratio that is happening. And that credit giving is a very difficult task. Today, we are not able to answer that task. That how are the carbon credits going to be put there? And whether, the another fear, it's whether this going green is going to be a non-tariff barrier because we don't want to import from you. So it is very important for the board to see that if they are into the import zone, whatever percentage they are in, whether across the globe, wherever their potential market is there, They have to be alert that it does not become an sort of a mechanism just to stop. Their exports and import by that country for any other reasons. And that is what is very important to again watch for the boards. So if you look at the board or the composition of the board, it's very important, you must understand the sector. You must understand what is happening across the globe for that sector, what your peer group are doing. The good boards have at least half an hour devoted comparing themselves with their peer groups in all the parameters. Whatever numbers are there in public domain, they are compared. So this is one of the good practices for future, it is very important. The kind of future expansion you are thinking of will be more automation, more use of technology, less use of employment. And yes, of course, the kind of Capex money you are going to generate from, from where you are going to get. Then it is very equally important is this diversified kind of a knowledge which comes on the board. So diversified membership of the board does not only mean gender, new, uh, gender or different kind of combination. It's the kind of expertise which is coming on the table. So that kind of a diversification is also needed for the future of the board. Today, when you are looking at the boards, what is coming is definitely exceptional leadership. Because the world is competitive, wherever you get the cheaper goods, the world moves there. And this is what the China has showed that way. And what is equally important is the geopolitical problem of the supply chains which was mentioned. And all that can be very disturbing, it can disrupt you completely. And pandemic has taught each one of us, something which came out of blue, nobody had a control on it, nobody knew what is happening. Every, the entire world came to a standstill, which nobody could ever dream that world can come to a standstill and it happened. So that kind of a risk mitigation is also important. How we are going to sail through this kind of disasters if it is going to hit. Unfortunately, these days, it's also the troubled geopolitical areas, literally a war, how it has disrupted. If you look at Ukraine, I think it is in IT, in steelmaking, it is one of the best combinations. Everything is disrupted there, everything is disrupted. So you can imagine the kind of board that needs there. So these are the places, these are the places, these are the combinations, these are the market relations. Where disruption comes and you have to re-enter the market. So the board also has to be very conscious of the mechanism. And prepare themselves to mitigate that difficult times and capable to re-enter the market and go ahead. So I will end by giving just one example, how in textiles, India worked very well during the pandemic. It used that time to enter the world of Europe and United States by e-commerce. That is what happened, they used the technology, they entered that market, made mistakes. You know, in India, we like floral prints on our linen, whereas in UK you like bland, plain colors. So the first entire lot of this textile industry went kaput. So they got a market feedback, advantage of technology, immediate real-time feedback, they changed their supply chain. And today, literally, they have a great business in Western world, whether it is US or UK. They have found their place. So why I'm giving you this example? When the world was on the downstream, where everything was coming to a standstill. One sector which used that as an opportunity to enter into a vacuum and establish themselves. So this is where again the role of the board comes to identify such opportunities. Instead of taking an excuse of, oh, everything is beyond control, everything is gone. That's where the real leadership comes. I really thank that you all are deliberating on these issues. Because these issues are very, very important for the growth of any sector you are working with or contributing to. Because the sector has to understand the peer group, the competition, the flaws with them and corrections. And not forget about the E S G and governance is looking after your own employees equally important. Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you ma'am for your address, very, very important tips for board members on how to navigate the VUCA world. I would now like to introduce our next guest of honor, Mr. Shiv, Shivakumar. He's an engineer from I T Madras and followed it up with management courses that I M Kolkata and the Wotton Business School. He has received many awards for leadership, turnaround transformations, brand building, HR practices, etc. He was awarded the K P M G Aima Award for Outstanding Leadership and the Asian Association of Management Organization Asia Leadership Award. Mr. Shivakumar is also a prominent speaker, delivering over twenty-five convocation speeches at various top business schools. Like I M Kozikot, I N Trichy, I M Nagpur and others. He is a regular contributor to business press, teaches at premier business schools and is a sought-after speaker for corporate events. He has authored three books, Reflections, a compilation of Shiv's articles, The Right Choice, Resolving Ten Career Dilemmas. And The Art of Management, please put your hands together for Mr. Shivakumar.
So the Institute of Directors, Mr. Kapoor, Mrs. Arunashama, Helen, ladies and gentlemen. Absolute delight to be here this evening to talk about a topic which I think will never go out of fashion. The whole concept of governance, the whole concept of directorship, the whole concept of what you need to do as a good director. What I will do over the next fifteen minutes is to give you ten lessons from what I've learned being on boards. I've been on about a dozen boards, commercial, educational, as well as nonprofit organizations. To start with, I want to mention to you that India has the highest number of listed companies in the world, five thousand two hundred. Okay, America has three thousand four hundred or odd, India has the highest number of listed companies. They are not going to go south, it might actually increase. However, we have a dearth of directors. We have just about two thousand directors who are there in all five thousand two hundred companies. So India needs very good directors. If there's one message which I want all of you to take out is that we need more and more directors. We can't just be satisfied with the current set of directors that we have, okay? Next, the market cap of all the five thousand two hundred companies put together is about one point one times our GDP. So if you truly want to create value for companies, that number should be significantly higher than where it is today. So there's a long way to go. So lesson number one, all boards need a global outlook. There is not a single board which can say, we are insulated, India is insulated, we don't need to worry. Just give you simple stats, the top ten countries in the world, okay? The top ten countries in the world by export or import have fifty percent of the imports or exports in the world, the top ten. The top sixteen countries in the world with a population of more than a hundred million account for eighty-four percent of consumption in the world. Whichever way you look at it, India will not be isolated from the rest of the world. India is a fundamental part of the value chain, a fundamental part of the consumption story which is happening. So we have to be integrated. So all boards need a global outlook. We have global issues like climate, like privacy, like D E I, like citizenship and technology. All of them impact both Indian and global organizations and you must have a view, okay? So every board member cannot excuse himself or herself by saying that we are immune. There's no board which is immune to the global winds, that's my first point to you. Second point to you, how do boards run, my experience? A lot of emphasis I lay on the chair of the board, the chairman of the board. The chairman of the board, his discipline, her discipline, her focus, his focus determines how a board is run. And it's a very important role. And we as board members and wherever I have been a board member. I try to influence that angle to ensure that the chairman has more voice and more power. So that he or she can bring in change, that's very important, okay? So you have the chair of the board, you have the members. Always select members to be the very best representatives you can get on the board. Do not go, India has a mistaken notions of going for friends and family, don't do that. It's very simple, you are in the market for highly talented board members. You don't want high quality talent on your boards, you will get low quality results in your company, as simple as that. So it's extremely important that you set the bar high. Because remember, in the company, the CEO, the management team, your media, your shareholders, your stakeholders. Are all looking at the board and saying, is this a bunch of friends and family or this bunch truly professional will do the very best? So to me, get the very best people on the board, okay? Next is you represent stakeholders and society. What's important for board is not to have oversight, it's the overused word, everybody talks of oversight. I truly submit to you, you need insight and not oversight. Anybody can do oversight, but very few people can do an insight, you know, sitting in a board. My third lesson for, for you is all board members must have the intellectual rigor and honesty when they come to a board meeting. I've seen many board members come unprepared for board meetings. They just come and do what I call surround sound management, you know, oof, 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 say a few things. I attended this board, I attended that board, useless stuff. Who is bothered whether you attended this board or that board, we are discussing this board. We are focused on this board, can you add value to this board, extremely important. So a board member who is not intellectually honest and rigorous is not going to contribute to that company or to the board, okay? There's an old joke which goes, why aren't horses invited to board meetings? Because boards don't want naysayers, okay, they only want yes-hairs, okay? So one of the things I always judge a board on is who is challenging whom and why? Are we challenging the real issue and really bringing to the surface the key points which are necessary, okay? The key thing for a good board, intellectually honest and rigorous board is to ask the right questions, not to provide the answers. The role of a board is to ask really tough and difficult questions. The more you are able to practice that, the better that board will be, the better other people will learn from you. Next, lesson number four, involvement with the operating team. Some boards get too cozy and too involved with the operating team, that's a mistake. The operating team is the operating team, you have to give them the support, you have to hold them accountable for results. We cannot do their job. You know, much as we might know the industry, much as we might know the issue, they have to realize what they need to do, not us. We have to ask the right questions and prep them. Number five, the non-negotiables, you must always uphold shareholder and stakeholder values. Who are you representing there is a very important question and many times board members and boards forget that whom they are representing. They are not representing the person who's appointed you, you are representing a broader set than the person who's appointed you. And that distinction is very important to be a truly good board member. Next, number six, clarity on roles. In my experience, a role can only do the following, set strategy, hold the CEO for delivery. Look at senior management hires, manage the risk compliance matrix, okay? Have very clear governance rules, okay, have respect in the board and have accountability for financial targets. That's all a board can do, focus on that and do the best in that. Everything else, we can throw it out of the window, you know, it doesn't apply. Next, a very important aspect, audit committees, I've been on many audit committees and many boards. You know, in audit committees, there are two things I want to, you know, mention. One is an old quote by Ronald Reagan, the great president of America, he said, trust but verify. It's a very important thing if you are part of an audit committee, you must trust, but you must verify. Don't lose your ability not to verify. The next one, I used to be on the Godrej Consumer Products Board for years, for eight years. Bharat Doshi, who was also on the RBI board, he used to be the audit chair. Every meeting, Darayas, the auditor would come in. At the end of the meeting, Bharat Doshi used to ask one question which I used to like and I always carry to other boards. And he would say, Dais, is there anything that this board should know that you think we don't know? Is there anything the management is telling you not to tell us? That's all he used to ask, that's all we can do as boards sitting on an audit committee. We can't pour over numbers and second decimal points and see what's happening, okay? We can make your, you know, ourselves comfortable by asking that one question. Number eight, I think board members of tomorrow don't need to worry about the past. The future is not going to be an extrapolation of the past, I think every company is recognizing it. If I were to give you a simple stat, every ten years, a hundred and seventy companies on the Fortune five hundred or the S and P five hundred disappear. Because they all assume that the past will continue in the future. It's no different in India, we've lost something like thirty airlines in the last twenty-five years, three zero. There are many retail companies which are dead, there are many commodity companies which are dead. So one of the roles of a board member is not to worry about the past. But to look at the future, be present and say, what is going to change in the future for us to be competitive? Who's going to be our competition in the future and that will come from left field, it will not be your current set of competitors. So look ahead, whether, whatever is happening around in the world, okay, be present about it. But please ensure that you focus the company on the future. Number nine, very important in social media world today. Reputation is the twenty-four by seven by two hundred country matrix. Something which happens somewhere in the world and connected to your company can impact you. So it's twenty-four by seven, it's across all two hundred companies, two hundred countries which are out there in the world. Anything can hit you in social media. So you have to be extra prepared and you have to be extra cautious about what you say or what you don't say as a board member as well as as a company. So please do, you know, take note of that. Finally, my last point, the license to operate. In today's world, you get from society a daily visa or a daily pass to operate. Trust is won or lost every twenty-four hours. You get up at six in the morning, you either lost trust or you won trust in society. And that accumulates and then that determines what happens to your company or what happens to the board. So the license to operate is a twenty-four by seven journey, please be very careful about it, it does not come in quarters. It's not a Q S Q T as most board members think, which is quarter, say quarter tak, that's not what it is. It's a daily game of trust in a future world. And finally, you know, every chair of the board, every owner in a company says that he wants like-minded board members. Which the joke we always say is that he wants people to like his mind and that's why he wants those board members and not board members who challenge it. But I'm sure that all of you will do the right thing in your boards and drive the very best results for your organization. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, we've got loads and loads of tips and your insightful words, I'm sure will go back with many people in the audience today, thank you so much. I would now like to introduce Ms. Helen Brand, O B E Chief Executive, A C C A. Ms. Brand built her career within professional bodies and has considerable experience and knowledge of the hundred and eighty markets in which A C C A currently operates. She is a founding member of the International Integrated Reporting Council and as vice chair of the I I R C board. She is a regular media commentator on the role of ethics and the delivery of public value play in business and society. In two thousand eleven, A C C A became the first international professional body to publish an integrated report on its performance. She has driven A C C A's pioneering work in supporting the development of professions across Asia, Africa, Europe and the Middle East. She received an O B E Queen's Birthday Honors List in June two thousand eleven for services to accountancy. And an honorary doctorate for the, from the University of Exeter. Personified Einstein, everything that counts in life cannot be counted. Ms. Brand is truly a distinguished brand ambassador of A C C A and the UK. I'm also pleased to inform you that Ms. Brand is also a distinguished fellow of I O D. We are very delighted to have Ms. Helen Brand, who has come all the way from the UK to be with us today and share her valuable insights. We are grateful to her for her deep commitment and unstated support towards the I O D. Please put your hands together and welcome on the podium, Ms. Brand.
Well, good evening everyone, I have three very hard acts to follow, but nonetheless, it's a pleasure to be with you tonight. And thank you so much to our hosts, I O D India for staging this splendid event. I'm so pleased to have. I'm so pleased to have this chance to say that ACCA places enormous value on our partnership with the Institute Directors and this occasion is a great opportunity to renew those links and to pledge our continued support in sharing our insights on the challenges, issues, and themes that face all of us in the world. Tonight's theme, Building Future Boards: Navigating Through Global Economic Challenges, is especially well chosen and it's perfectly suited to this audience. It's all about, it's all about how we build effective boards that work and how we as directors and business leaders stay ahead of global trends and especially how we build trust and transparency with the public, regulators, investors, government, and with anyone who has an interest in supporting businesses and economies which are sustainable through to the middle of this century and beyond. This question of sustainability in particular has rocketed to the top of the business agenda everywhere and rightly so. It's about climate change, of course, which I'll talk about little, but not just climate change, it's a much broader concept and I do my best to describe some of the wider issues of sustainability which present themselves to business leaders, whether they're in India or anywhere else in the world. It's important because the issue of sustainability goes to the heart of why people should trust us with stewardship of business activity and the health of national economies. There's a phrase that people in business once use to repeat when they talked about the challenge they faced in adapting to any kind of change and you've all heard it, I'm sure. The phrase is, "Operating on a burning platform." And it sprang to mind when the United Nations published its Emissions Gap Report. That report said that as matters stand, there is no credible pathway to keeping the leap in global temperatures below the critical threshold of 1.5 degrees centigrade. Scientists agree that going beyond 1.5% centigrade will see dangerous impacts for people all over the world. So it painted a frightening picture of the dangers posed by accelerating climate change and of a world battered by ever-increasing extreme weather events and of entire countries consumed by wildfire and floods. It pointed to a terrible future of a world that is both a burning platform and a drowning platform. And I don't have to spell that out to the audience in India, not as we watch while the country suffers ever-increasing bouts of drought and with people in peril of displacement because flooding threatens to make their homeland uninhabitable. It's in this context that we talk about the broad concept of sustainability in business and as we try to agree on what boards can do to turn back the tide of climate destruction. A generation ago, this was still a fringe issue. A concern for the environment was dismissed as an obsession for eccentrics and it was a long, long way from the top of corporate priorities. Now we know better, we're better informed, there's no excuse and there's no hiding place. Science has removed any doubt about the reality of what human-made climate change means for our future. Those who deny it are the eccentrics now and the consensus that we need real change is universal. So what can we do? I know that when we watch upsetting images of destruction from the latest climate-related tragedy, there's a temptation to throw up our hands and imagine the problem is too deeply rooted for us to fix. After all, how can individuals or business, a single business, make a difference? I'm especially happy to speak to this audience on this issue today because as board directors and as business and community leaders, you are perfectly placed to serve as powerful advocates for sustainability. Everyone here is in a position to help protect businesses by making them aware of the importance of sustainability and how it affects their standing in the marketplace. In our own way, at our own level, in our daily working lives, we can act as champions for sustainable business. It's important that we present sustainability as good business sense. Yes, of course, there is a moral argument for sustainable business behavior, but no one likes to be preached at. Companies are on different stages of the journey. Many companies won't take steps until it is financially compelling. So leaders have a duty to demonstrate that sustainable business is also smart business. There's a clear ethical case for placing sustainability at the heart of your business, but there is more to it than that moral dimension. Every director also owns a responsibility to their business to defend and promote their commercial interests, but there's no conflict between those things. This is about risk and the danger of reputational damage and about the danger that by not doing enough, customers won't want to trade with the business, investors won't want to invest in it, and people won't want to work there. Now, this is happening now as more big institutional investors widen their criteria for allocating capital to include many more measures than simple profit and loss. There's a revolution in how value is measured in businesses with an ever-growing emphasis on ESG measures, environment, social, and governments. Put simply, the way we keep score in business is changing and ACCA believes that the clamor for more change, for greater emphasis on the sustainable operations will only accelerate. The pressure for more action on ESG is coming from above and below, from governments and investors and from consumers who are ever more discerning in how they choose to spend their money and who they choose to spend it with. I believe that as the climate crisis and economic turmoil worsen and concerns about sustainability widen, these attitudes will become more prevalent and more powerful. And we know business gets it. ACCA's report, Climate Action and the Accountancy Profession: Building a Sustainable Future, set out clearly how businesses could increase efforts to be more sustainable and to make more of a positive impact on society. It built on an earlier report from ACCA called Mainstreaming Impact: Scaling a Sustainable Recovery, which showed that 90% of the business leaders we served aid all around the world agreed that it was important to promote sustainability. Clearly, the debate on whether sustainability is the future for businesses being concluded. It's now time for action, it's our only future. For ACCA, the success of our efforts to build sustainable businesses rests on how we measure good performance. It's about how the market responds to what businesses do, about which businesses are rewarded or penalized for their efforts on sustainability. It's about changing how we view what value really means. To do that effectively and efficiently, it's important we agree a global framework of standards that is easy for every business to understand and that's why ACCA is proud to support the work of the ISSB, the International Sustainability Standards Board, which was launched at COP26 in Glasgow. It's forging a global consensus on the direction reporting needs to follow, building on existing standards and bringing them together in a coherent, integrated whole. It's about making regulation and reporting more consistent and universal, replacing the broken jigsaw of ill-fitting pieces with one clear picture of effective measurement that makes sense to every business, big or small, everywhere in the world. It's also about promoting the concept of the integrated report, close to ACCA's heart and my heart, which is a crucial tool in letting the sun shine in on a business's activities. It's about recording performance and results in a clear way across measures which extend further than profit and loss to include impacts on the environment and societies so that investors and everyone and anyone who wants or needs to know how an organization is operating can find simply all the information they desire. It's the only way that a sustainable market can function efficiently, by giving investors and consumers all the information they need to make good decisions. It's the only way that we can ensure that responsible, sustainable businesses are rewarded in the marketplace and the best way of sending corrective messages to poor performers. This is important because unless we can agree on a clear view of how we account for our actions in business, we're lost in a smoke of confusion. This raises important issues which go to the heart of our theme tonight to do with compliance, especially transnational compliance with international standards and with governance. And I'd like to spend a few moments setting out ACCA's view on what we mean by good corporate governance. First of all, it's essential for both financial and economic stability and sustainable growth. It supports companies and organizations' long-term performance and in building resilience in the face of upheaval and change. We believe that while the legislative frameworks can help achieve a minimum standard in governance practice, governments should also show strong support for voluntary measures which improve transparency and the adoption of internationally accepted corporate governance principles. The enforcement of superficial targets is no substitute for a principles-based approach to corporate culture based on a well-defined purpose, set of values and vision that is verified regularly. We believe that the most successful companies are those that genuinely engage with their stakeholders, including their employees, through a clear sense of purpose, strategy, and direction, strong, consistent communication across the organization, transparent fairness up and down the organization. The effective management of risk is essential in ensuring an organization meets its strategic objectives as well as meeting regulatory and compliance requirements. Given today's intense and fast-changing risk landscape, boards are under significant pressure to be more accountable for their stewardship and that includes preparing for potential threats and considering the risks and opportunities in all decision-making. The ownership of effective risk management in the company always rests with the board and cannot sit with anyone's siloed designated function. This is because the board is tasked to determine the overall approach to risk, including the organization's risk appetite, and to oversee the effectiveness of risk management of the organization delegated by senior management. For risk management to function effectively, a risk-aware culture must run up and down the company. The board, of course, must set the tone and lead by example to ensure that the entire organization and its people understand the part they play. Risk management is very importantly inseparable from strategy and performance. It involves everyone in the organization and allows risk to be assessed in all conversations and decision-making. Professional accountants can play their part in gathering the key information needed to understand the organization's risk and make sure they're presented consistently to decision-makers. Their professional training and code of ethics means their understanding of risk in business goes far beyond financial reporting, but in creating and assessing the appropriate governance frameworks and indeed providing the foresight needed to navigate the volatile and uncertain world we live in. Compliance with international targets is increasingly a hot topic everywhere for companies, countries, and communities all over the planet. Demonstrating and acting on a commitment to the public good, on environmental concerns, on social and economic fairness for all people have not become just nice to have an eye-catching claim in a glossy corporate brochure, but a moral license for businesses to operate, trade, and even exist. It is in response to this quickly changing attitude towards the purpose of business that ACCA is publishing a report entitled "Just Transition" to coincide with the next COP conference in Dubai in November and December. It will share our strong belief that words are no longer enough, only measurable actions, complete accountability, and a willingness to report results and impacts honestly, openly, and transparently meets the needs of our time. I know that tonight's occasion will play a crucial role in advancing this work and ensuring that together, we build sustainable businesses and economies that work for all people, whoever they are, wherever they are. Finally, I think this event is so timely, useful, and constructive because it brings us together to remind us that our efforts are not isolated. They feed into a worldwide drive to build a business culture that respects sustainability and promotes long-term economic health. We really are all in this together as business leaders and as citizens of the world. I knew that, I know that the mood has swung between the urgent need for change in the way we run our economies and businesses and they were pushing us on open door on this issue. The only question that remains for all of us is to decide which precise actions our own businesses can take to make our difference. It's about how we make a positive contribution to promoting the long-term sustainability of business and to protect the planet for our grandchildren to enjoy. We no longer have the luxury to debate the merits or otherwise of sustainable business. We know enough that the clock has ticked down and the alarm is sounding. So our time to take action is now and I thank you very much for your attention. Thank you.
Big round of applause for our distinguished speakers. On stage, we have taken away lots of useful nuggets that board members can apply in everyday life. We thank you all for taking the time and coming here. Let's get started with our panel discussion and invite on stage the moderator for this session. Please put your hands together and welcome on stage, Mohammed Sajid Khan, Director, India ACCA. Mr. Khan is Director, India ACCA. His control builds on over 17 years of experience working for ACCA where he has gained considerable experience in projects that develop and sustain the accountancy profession, working with partners and other stakeholders to meet the demand for professional accountants across growing economies. So please put your hands together and welcome on stage, Mr. Sajid Khan. Now, joining him on stage are our distinguished speakers. Please put your hands together and welcome on stage, Mr. Sadav Said, Chief Executive Officer, Muduth Microfin Limited. Mr. Said is the founding CEO of Muduth Microfin Limited. Since the start of the business in 2010, Mr. Said led Muduth Microfin Limited to become the fourth-largest NBFC MFI in the country, managing 7,000 crore AUM, catering to 2.1 million rural households. Mr. Said has two decades of experience in banking and financial services industry. He has worked in leadership roles with various financial services organizations such as Pandala Spurthi Financial Limited, India Bull's Financial Services, Saturn Credit Care, HDFC Bank, and GE Money. He has hands-on experience in policymaking, credit administration, operations, and risk management. Please put your hands together and welcome on stage, Ms. Kalpana Jain, Partner, Deloitte India. Ms. Kalpana Jain has been at Deloitte for more than 25 years. She provides advice and counsel on M&amp;A, joint ventures, valuations, and fundraising for market transactions. She has been a partner since April 2006 and has been significantly involved in the retail and consumer sectors as well. In 2013, she was recognized as one of the 25 most talented women professionals of India by CMO Asia and World Brand Congress. She was named Superwoman of Delhi in 2016 by Radio One. She has been the Chairperson of Private Equity and Venture Capital Association of India and is also a member of Deloitte India Coordinating Board. She speaks regularly with top-tier media as well as prominent industry conferences and also frequently coaches and mentors young entrepreneurs in various forums and workshops as a charter member of the Entrepreneurs' Day. Please welcome on stage, Dr. Anil Kumar, Independent Director, LIC, and the CEO, University of Delhi Foundation, Professor, Department of Commerce, Delhi School of Economics, University of Delhi. Dr. Kumar is an accomplished professional, holding key positions as Independent Director at Life Insurance Corporation of India, CEO of University of Delhi Foundation, and the Professor at Department of Commerce, Delhi School of Economics. He is an alumnus of SRCC, Delhi School of Economics, and Harvard Business School, specializing in finance, corporate governance, and higher education. Please welcome on stage with a round of applause, Mr. Harpreet Singh, Partner, PWC. Mrs. Singh is a partner in risk consulting practice of PWC with a focus on governance, risk, and compliance space. As a partner, he handles a diverse portfolio of clients, helping them set up governance frameworks, risk management, compliance, and internal audits. He has advised boards of large listed corporates on designing structured frameworks to conduct board evaluations. His experience of interacting with senior board members arms him with sharp insights on prevailing trends and practices on board governance. Please welcome on stage, Dr. Amit Surin, Dean, Academics, IMT Gazebad. Dr. Surin has accumulated over 26 years of experience in both academics and the industry. A round of applause for Dr. Amit Surin as he makes his way up onto the stage. He has worked with prominent information technology and telecom firms such as TCS and Aircel in India and the United States. His expertise lies in various areas including business relation management, program management, operations, information technology, human resource management, talent acquisition, account management, and general management. Please welcome on stage once again, Helen Brand of ACCA. We are back, we look forward to listening to her views once again. We look forward to listening to her views once again and I'm very happy to welcome all members of this panel discussion. So a round of applause for everybody on stage. And I'm going to hand it over to the moderator to steer the discussion forward.
Thank you very much. A very good evening to you all. I'm glad to be back in Delhi and also to be back with I O D family. And it's my pleasure to moderate today's discussion on this very topical theme of building future boards and how do we navigate through the global economic challenges. Today we have, as you can see, eminent panelists coming from different business sectors, diverse backgrounds, and they bring with them rich experience, wisdom and insights that we can all share today. And today we are going to be hearing to them. I don't want to spend more time on building the context, but I just want to spend a few seconds just to give the format of today's discussion. Given the economic challenge that we are facing, we have just identified five critical areas that we all need to focus on, the boards should focus on, to be able to navigate through these economic challenges. And instead of every speaker speaking on all the areas, we have identified each speaker with that one area. And once they have spoken on those respective areas, we will ask them one question on your behalf. And if we get time, of course, we'll open up again for questions that you may have at the end. With that, I would like to invite first of all my colleague Helen to talk about what is the importance of innovation and adaptation in navigating through the economic challenges.
So innovation and adaptation, I guess we all know that, and we've heard already about the importance of looking forward. So that innovation piece has to be absolutely constant. But having identified how you need to innovate, you have to make it happen and that's the adaptation piece. So having identified the innovation that's needed, have you got the capability within the organization to actually put that into practice? And we know that a lot of plans, programs, ideas that sink without trace within organizations unless you have a systemic approach to the adaptation of the innovation ideas. So from a board perspective, we think you need to be promoting that culture of innovation from the top all the time and it's not as a one-off exercise. It's in the conversations you're having at every board. And it's that anticipating and responding to change. So again, responding is fine, but anticipating is even better and having that forward-looking piece that enables you to innovate. Embracing technology and with the technology, of course, comes the data and the analytics that go along with that. But I think the board really has to be insisting now on that technological dimension to any organization's operations and culture. And then that focus that we talked about that's broader than climate of society and social responsibility. What is the contribution that your organization is making to society? And what is the impact that your organization is having on society, which of course includes your employees? So I see innovation and adaptation being enabled by all of those elements and the board making sure that on their agenda, all of those headings are being addressed in every conversation.
Thank you Helen for highlighting the importance of innovation and of course the proactive approach that we need to take thinking ahead. With that, let's move on to Mr. Said. It'd be good to hear from you. What's the importance of risk management resilience building? You have heard in the opening session, some of the speakers have talked about risk management also, you know. How do we build the resilience? What's the importance? Can you just share your thoughts on that?
Thank you, Sajid. Thank you first of all, I O D for putting this together and inviting us. Thank you for all the panelists here and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I think the topic at hand that has been given to me is risk management in building resilience in context of our boards. I think this is a topic which is close to my heart. I've studied risk management. I have practiced risk management for last two decades, so something that I relate to very closely. But before that, I need to kind of define my perception of governance and how you achieve good risk management through the board and through the governance. So usually we confuse governance as following the law. I feel that it's not just the law, it is a layer above that which is the expectation of the stakeholders. That's governance part, but good governance is above that. So if you are managing the expectation of the stakeholder, that doesn't mean only the shareholders. That means the regulator, the bankers, the employees, the ecosystem, the government, everybody. If you're taking care of their expectation, that's what I call as good governance. So having said that, I think in the context of industry that I represent, which is the banking and financial services industry, lot has been happening lately. I think financial services regulators are very, very proactive. In fact, so much so that we have been complaining that every month there is a circular. But I think all in good stead. I think we are evolving very rapidly. We have seen certain things come in like something like an E C L approach to risk management in terms of provisioning, which is kind of a basic. But then more on the governance side that putting a C R O is becoming a mandatory for organizations which have crossed fifty billion of asset under management, then putting a chief compliance officer in place. So all of this is in good state for the organization. But I think risk management is far, far wider. These are enabling provision, supervisory provisions so as to ensure that the organization goes in the right direction. But what these functions and roles do is more important. I think during the address, opening address, Dr. Kapoor quoted an example of Silicon Valley Bank. And I think that is very interesting kind of an example. If you look at Silicon Valley Bank, what they did wrong, they didn't take a very high risk bet. They actually took the lowest risk bet. They put all the money in a treasuries of government, so treasury bills and they were all ten-year treasuries and all the money. The wrong thing that they did was being in the location where they were located. They were only concentrating on businesses which were related to Silicon Valley and their businesses were startups and everything. So all of their assets were coming from there, all of their liabilities were coming from there. So there was a concentration risk. So had there been a government policy, governance policy within the board that you need to diversify your business, I think they would not have seen such an issue. Second thing also, when you do things which are fairly simple, but if you don't look at scenarios which could be out of whack, like what happened to treasury yields and everything and all the money was in treasury, a long-term treasury and it went down and they had M T M losses. So they faced an issue. So that is one example. But I think the world is filled with examples. Usually what happens is hubris is what kills us. You can take, I don't want to take any name, but you have examples like Kodak. Kodak as in, or Fuji film, which was like a market share, which was almost like eighty percent market share at the peak of their cycle. But then the revolution came in, technology came in, mobile have the photographs. You don't need anymore those film roles to develop. Similarly, it happens with Nokia. So the world is filled with examples. So one thing that we have learned out of the COVID pandemic and everything that has happened, that you need to be very agile. The risk management has to be forward-looking. It cannot be just managing your today's risk. It has to be forward-looking and I think the regulator has done a good job in terms of putting E C L method of risk management and provisioning in the financial service sector, especially the lending businesses I'm talking about. So E C L is what? E C L is predicting the possibility of default and what is the laws giving default. And you predict that and you arrive at a provision. The traditional method of I G A P was you arrive at a provision, what is your risk appetite? Then you create a provision for that, what is the probability of default there as well. But this is much more forward-looking. It takes all income passing risk, the risk of macros, the risk of any sort of a natural calamity, risk of economic downturn, everything is there. So I think that's the right approach and that's where I think the governance should be emphasized with. And you should look at all income passing risk. And for that, I think there is a good amount of framework that is put in place when there are audit committees which are necessary, which requires role of directors and role of director is very important. The audit committee which has been put in place has to have majority of the independent directors and the chairman should be independent directors. And it should be, as somebody said during that, it should be a functional audit committee. So right, Mr. Shubh Kumar said, the right questions should be asked. So nowadays I can tell you by experience because I'm practicing today. The regulator is looking at the minutes, the regulator is saying whether there was a counter opinion given or not. Whether you just said you assembled and you just approved everything and you moved on with life, it's not the same. So regulator is saying where is the minutes, where is the counter questions? Was there a dissent given by anybody on any of the decisions? So that's very important. So I totally agree with Mr. Shubh Kumar's opinion, Mr. Shiva's opinion, that there has to be dissent. There has to be a discussion, then things move on. There is of course nomination-revenue committee that is there, which has a good role of an independent director. It has to be because ultimately any business has a very, very significant people's risk. Essentially in financial services, when you're selling a service, you are not selling a product, which is something that you are manufacturing. So your people are very important because it's all about knowledge, how you have dealt with the customer, how you have cracked the market or how you have developed the product in a form of service. So that's very important. What is your strategy in terms of retention? What is your strategy in terms of hiring and everything? That is very, very important. Then you have of course the risk management committee and risk management committee looks at everything from your enterprise level risk, from information security risk, from cybersecurity risk to the portfolio level risk policy. So I think that has become very, very important. I think two things, I've talked about risk, but from a resilience point of view. If you look at, I think risk and governance go hand in hand. They are not kind of two different things basically. You have good risk management policies, then you will have good governance. And if you have good governance, of course you will have good risk management policies. But to build resilience, you need to have a far sight. You have to be a forward-looking risk management policy. We have seen in this most volatile world, every day there is something happening. There was COVID couple of years ago, there was a Ukraine war recently. Now there is another Middle East kind of a flare-up that has happened. Tomorrow what happens in China and dead bubble burst. So nobody knows. So what you have to have is an agile policy. We saw all of us, nobody imagined that whole organization would be following work from home for two months, six months, that kind of a time. But we were forced with that situation and people who dealt with it quickly, they came back with solutions, were able to do business. Most of the people adopted the online kind of approach and they did well. So you have to be resilient and then you have to be above the expectation. There is a very good framework that R B A has put in. There is what is the internal capital adequacy requirement for a lending business? So you have a capital adequacy requirement which is fifteen percent. But what is the board recommending that should be a capital adequacy requirement over and above that? So that is what builds resilience because your shock will come. You should not go below the statutory level of requirement. You should be above that. So I think those kind of policies help you build resilience. I think I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Said, for sharing your practical perspective and also underlining that risk management should have agility and forward-looking approach. With that, we'll move to the next theme and I'll go to Ms. Kalpana Jain. You know, in the previous inauguration session, people talked about the capability in leadership in the board. So can you please comment upon what is the importance of talent and leadership in the board?
So I'm going to talk about leadership and talent with a little bit of difference. So when I'm talking about leadership, I think the first principle is what is the future board going to look like? What are the constituents? Who are the kind of members, board members we are going to have into the future? Without exception, I think we've been talking about some of the challenges and some of the, let's say imperatives that boards are going to be facing as we move into the future. We talked about sustainability, we talked about, we didn't talk so much about digital, but digital technology. We didn't talk so much about it, but cyber risk, which comes along with digital and technology, automation, which you mentioned and which again will result in some jobs. You mentioned that, that jobs will change. I would rather think that jobs will not go away, but jobs will change. So it may present challenges of re-skilling. It may present challenges of repagaging how people will deliver at businesses. So all of this will lead into the kind of skillset and the kind of subject matter expertise we need on boards. Hitherto, let's accept, at least here in this country, it's a lot been personality-driven. Board members were appointed because they were well-known or because you had friends or because they were family members. I think we have moved beyond that. We are beginning to move fairly beyond that. But going into the future, you will probably have a far more scientific, if I can use the word, approach to building boards in terms of who are on the board and how are each one of them representative of what might be needed when one of these uncertain events hit us. We have seen so many uncertain events hit us. And for example, cyber, there's something that may not, every current board member may not know. So either you have a role and responsibility for one of the board members to know it or you have advisors in the interim or you have some of your executive directors, for example, who could be, you know, the experts who could bring such kind of expertise. Similarly, it will apply to E S G. Similarly, it will apply to re-changing supply chains that are disrupted in an uncertain situation, for example. The readiness and the ability of the board and its constituent board members to address something we can't see, something that hasn't happened, I think is the central point. Equally so, I think it's the responsibility of the board and therefore the responsibility of the board members to track evolving trends, to see how it will impact business. We didn't talk about generative A I. I think that is the topic which is very much on everybody's mind today. How it changes our businesses, how it offers an opportunity to our businesses and how it will disrupt the businesses and therefore what do we need to do about it? So on leadership at the board, that's my thought. On talent, I think what is clearly evolving, we've seen this happen globally and we are seeing this happen here in India too. Talent itself wants to work with businesses with a purpose. So where we knit together the sustainability, the E H G imperatives, the ways of working, the future of work, when we refer to how our young people want to work. They don't want to come into the office or to the factory, I mean in the factory might need to, or to develop software sitting in the office environment. They are happy to do it in a hybrid model. So if we go back to our traditional ways of saying, no, everybody has to show up to work. We have seen what has happened in some of the organizations where mass resignations were seen. So it's not the role of the board to define the work environment for talent, but it is the role of the board to look at what's emerging and to look at what will drive the culture and encourage and support the executive in basically taking that forward. So to my mind, talent used to be something which one didn't really work on or talk about on the board. But our boards today and our boards tomorrow will definitely need to address talent. After all, people work for people, people work with people and unless they are able to work together, business is not going to be generated. So some of those thoughts, I don't want to take up too much time, I can go on. I have a lot, many thoughts, but perhaps in the interest of time.
Yeah, thank you very much for sharing your thoughts and also the scientific way of looking at leadership and talent in the board. With that, I'll move on to Dr. Kumar. And Dr. Kumar, in the earlier inauguration session, Helen talked about sustainability and Dr. Sharma talked about E S G. Again, this is an area very critical in how we navigate the future challenges. So what's your thoughts on this sustainability and E S G?
Good evening, everyone. Sustainability is a, I would say, not only a buzzword, but it's a fashionable term. Everyone talks about business sustainability, everyone talks about E S G. But what's the real picture? Let's come to it. Everyone is aware that the biggest challenge which this twenty-first century is facing is that of the inequality, social inequality. The another challenge is the disruption which has The another challenge is the disruption which has happened in this world. And the biggest challenge is the climate change. Climate change driven extreme weather conditions which we see globally. The global temperature has risen by about one degree Celsius. What is going to happen in the near future? Are we prepared for it? When we say sustainability, when we say ESG, when we talk about climate change. In the G20 summit, the theme was life, lifestyle for protection of environment. Lifestyle, that means the behavior change has to happen at the individual level, at the family level, at the level of the company, at the level of the state and at the level of the central government. That means we have to adopt while sitting at the board, those practices, those business practices which are sustainable. Are we prepared for it? Mr. Shiv Kumar talked about, we have listed companies which is highest in the world, five thousand two hundred. That means how many boards we have? Five thousand two hundred boards? And how many boards are really professionally governed? If you go to the state boards, state enterprises board, most of the boards have not been fully constituted. I know it fully. In case of the private sector, there are so many companies where still the board members, the so-called independent directors are appointed by the controlling shareholder, by the families. But of course, it is rooted through the nomination committee and board committees, the board and everything is in place. This is one aspect which we have to think about it. If we say building future boards, I will say it is wrong. It is transforming the present boards of the companies. How this going to happen? In the board, most of you sit on the boards also. The agenda paper runs into how many pages roughly on an average? Two hundred pages? And how many of us just go through all two hundred pages? This is the question which we have to ponder over. Mr. Shiv Kumar pointed about it. How many of us go prepared? Then go through the agenda of the boards? Sustainability is, is it there on the agenda of the board? How serious really the boards are about? When it comes to the board meeting, when it comes to the audit committee meeting, the whole focus is on the quarterly results. That is, you know, when we have this short-term kind of phenomena, it is ruining sustainability. When we talk about sustainability, it means sustainability of the business. It means the sustainable profits, the profits that can sustain in future. This, you know, quarterly profit or quarterly financial performance is like a bubble. That means we are ignoring the long-term factors which are affecting the performance of the company. We just neglect what is going to happen in the near future. We do not have that kind of a vision while sitting at the board. Let me tell you that most of the major scams in this world have happened because of this short-termism. In case of Lehman Brothers, the focus entirely was on the quarterly profits. Do you think it was sustainable? It was not sustainable. In case of Satyam, of course, some kind of scam happened. What the board was doing? It was the most professionally managed company in the world. All who was there on the board was Krishna Pelepu, whom we have the greatest regard as the father of the corporate governance, former cabinet secretary, Mr. Vinod Dham, the founder of Pentia. Everyone was there on the board and no one could think what is happening at the level of the board. Mr. Raju was cooking the books. There are certain things which must have been taken care of. The company was sitting on a large pile of cash reserves. Did anyone ask questions? What are you doing with the large cash reserve? Why not you use it? If not in a position to use it, why not you give it back to the shareholders? Because buyback is one of the options which is available. In case of ILFS, I think Mr. Said talked about the risk management. The risk management committee was in place. The, you know, default started happening in September two thousand eighteen. See what happened? The risk management committee did not meet for the last three years. So what to do with that risk management company? Another factors, the debt equity ratio of ILFS was sixteen times. Was it sustainable? Definitely not. The current ratio, which we say the ideal current ratio is two is to one, that the current assets have to be two times of the current liabilities. See, what was the current ratio of ILFS when the default started happening? It was zero point six seven. That means even the current assets were not adequate to meet the current liabilities. Was it sustainable? Definitely it was not sustainable. So what is happening at the board is that we are just focusing on the quarterly results, ignoring what is going to happen. So the future board, when we talk about it, I think that we should look at the present board and we should look at the actual role which the present board of directors is performing in different companies. More than five thousand listed companies and other unlisted companies. There is no, in case of unlisted companies, you are very well aware that there is no standard of corporate governance in most of the unlisted companies. So in that scenario, can we talk about sustainability? Certainly not. There has been lot of focus on the climate change. We are signatory to Paris Agreement of two thousand fifteen, where we are committed to have zero carbon emission by the year two thousand fifty. Is it achievable? What are you doing on our end? There's so many things which can be done, for example, I'll give certain tips. In case of a transport companies, transport industries, how many of the transport companies have converted their transport vehicles into the EVs? How many boards have insisted upon it? In case of banking and financial institution companies, maybe that use of fossil fuel is not so relevant. What is relevant is the misleading advertisement, the misleading kind of marketing tactics which these companies, some of the companies are following. What are we doing sitting at the board? Is it sustainable? And we talk about building of the future boards. And the topic which is assigned to me is sustainability. Do you think that the boards are sustainable? Do you think that the companies are sustainable? As I said in the beginning that, our focus on the quarterly financial performance is like a bubble. We ignore the long-term performance of the companies that what is going to happen in the near future. How many boards talk about that what are the ESG factors which we have followed during the year? Or what are we doing on this front? It is never on the agenda of the boards, except a few companies. That too, in case of one thousand top companies, you are aware that as per the SEBI mandate, they have to issue the BRSR. And if you go into the BRSR of most of the companies, believe me, it is copy and paste exercise. Just copy and paste exercise. So are we serious about sustainability? Are we serious about the ESG principles? This we have to think about it. Unless and until at the top level, we are serious about it, we are committed about it. I think that nothing is going to happen. So these are some of the issues, my initial thoughts, I thought that I should share with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Kumar, for asking some relevant questions we should ask ourselves. Now, moving to Mr. Singh, given the risk with risk management, you have another speaker to speak on risk management again, sharing his practical perspective.
Thanks, Ajit, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will build on to what Said said. Look, we are living in a very volatile environment and some of the previous speakers alluded to that. Two simultaneous wars going on, the tech disruption which is happening around us, climate change, energy transition, these are some of the challenges which we are clapping with. So I think the, in that kind of environment, the need for risk management and effective risk management is very well established. And we did see during the pandemic that boards and the senior managements focus on risk management, on resilience, on business continuity, on disaster recovery went up considerably. But I think that's now tapering off and we are, you know, coming back to business as usual. And what we are actually seeing in the market is that, look, majority of the companies are not able to derive value from the risk management programs. And risk management programs, in most of the cases, they have become a check-in-the-box exercise, right? And companies do that because there is a compliance requirement under the Companies Act or the listing agreement. You know, some of the challenges which have happened, which Dr. Kumar alluded to, do indicate ineffective risk management procedures. And I think one of the reason why this is happening is that companies are looking at just one aspect of risk management, which is, which is the threat part of it, you know, looking at risk as a threat. And they do ignore the opportunity part of the risk, right? You know, how can you use your risk management function to build a competitive advantage in the marketplace? Particularly in a scenario where disruptions are happening all around us. And so I think that's something which you need to think about. And the second is that what we are seeing is that the implementation of the risk management processes is fairly patchy across companies. You know, who owns the process within the company is not very well-defined. Majority of the companies do not have a full-time chief risk officers. There is no common language for identification and assessment of risk, there is no usage of technology. So I think these are some of the areas which we need to think through as we go about developing a effective risk management program for large corporations. And a couple of elements which I thought I will touch upon, which, which we do, you know, discuss with the companies where we work for on the risk management agenda. Look, the risk management program has to be aligned with the corporate strategy. You know, you can't have a risk management program which is operating in silos. And you can't have a strategy discussion without talking about the risks which the company faces and also the opportunity that lies ahead. So risk management and corporate strategy go hand in hand. And that is why in a lot of companies, you would actually see risk management getting housed within the corporate strategy function. The second element is the executive sponsorship. So the risk management program has to be a board-driven, a senior management-driven agenda item. And that sets the right tone at the top and as a result, a better adoption of risk management processes across the organization. The third element is around governance, you know. So the board needs to ensure that, look, there is a person who commands respect within the companies running the risk management function. There is a full-time CRO and CRO decides what is the objective of the risk management function, you know, how will success look like in terms of reducing surprises? So that's extremely important. The fourth element is around risk appetite, you know. So I think that's again an area where board members and board can play a very important role. Work with the management to determine what are the tolerance limits within which a company has to operate. And this includes both quantitative as well as qualitative elements. The fifth is around the entire process of identifying risks and monitoring that, right? You know, so typically as board members, you can't look at everything which is happening in the company. So focus on risks which really matter and typically in any company, it can't be more than five to seven risks, right? And also bring in the outside in perspective, you know, what is competition doing? What is happening in the external market and how is that going to impact my company? That becomes extremely important. The other element which is very important is the whole risk culture aspect. I think Shiv did speak about that, you know. And there are a lot of tools available in the market which can help you do a risk culture assessment, you know, whether risk is embedded into the decision-making process and how wider organization looks at risk. So extremely important element. The last but not the least is technology. You know, look, there are a lot of GRC tools which are available in the market which can help you run your risk management process in a very optimal manner. And as board members, you should encourage companies to adopt technology. You know, there are data-driven, AI-driven technologies which can help you move from a reactive risk management to a more predictive risk management. So I think these are some of the areas, Ajit, I thought worth mentioning, which US board members should assess whether your companies are looking at and to build an effective risk management program.
Thank you, Mr. Singh, for sharing your thoughts and it's useful to know that you should also look at risk from opportunity point of view rather than threat always as we do. And also the risk culture and looking at the gaps in risk management process is very useful. Thank you. Moving on to Dr. Serin, again, there is another important aspect is the stakeholder engagement. And, you know, giving them the confidence and building the trust. So how do you think we can build the trust and maintain that engagement?
Sure, thank you, thanks. I would like to start with Milton Friedman's comments and his famous article in the New York Times in thirteen September nineteen seventy. And that article was seminal in the sense that the profit, the social responsibility of business is making profits. And that article, if you read it thoroughly, it's a very solid article. And it had an impact on Wall Street for fifty years and possibly now. And once it had an impact on Wall Street, effectively across the capitalist world, it had an impact. And largely, if you look at it, the boards and everyone is finally answerable to the shareholders and they are looking at their interests. But slowly as, you know, we started looking and as the businesses evolved and management evolved, people realized that where is the balance? Where is the, where are the other stakeholders? Where are the customers? Where are the employees? Where are, you know, the regulators? Are the companies taking care of those people also, you know? Because finally, you know, your employees who are there, they are serving your customers. They are the ones who are serving your customers. And if you have good employees, competent employees, they will serve those customers. And those customers are the ones who are giving you business and they are giving you revenues. So finally, those revenues are coming and those, once those revenues are coming, the profits are flowing. So if you start looking at the entire chain and yes, compliances are important, risks are important, your regulators are important. If you do a mistake now, like the Volkswagen Group did and they made profits, but then they paid a penalty much, much higher, you know, because of their pollution problems, etc. You know, so all this is a balance. And are, are we looking at stakeholders in a balanced way? Or are we just looking one way, you know, and squeezing profits from quarter to quarter? And are the boards looking and balancing the long-term interests or the short-term interests? And both, you know, because it is not that you just don't make any profits quarterly and you just focus on the long run only. But are you balancing? And so in that sense, the stakeholder engagement became important because it is important for profits finally, you know. And because you, you want long-term profits or you want short-term profits? If you want the company to sustain in the long run, you need to have those balances. You need to have competent employees, you need to hire, you need to pay the market salaries. You know, you need to invest in technology, you need to invest in digitization. So all those investments are required. A lot of board has to guide about capital allocation, you know, and capital allocation over a long-term period. How, what, how will you burn the capital? So all those things are important. And, and that balancing is something very critical. So all the stakeholders, in that sense, yes, possibly there may be a priority among the stakeholders. There may be a hierarchy among the stakeholders. You know, those will all depend on the type of boards or the type of companies or type of the context. But still, you know, one has to have a, have a full view. And as a lot of discussion is happening on the composition of the board. And one thing I want to just quote Peter Drucker, who said about Alfred Sloan, that in one of the meetings, Alfred Sloan, there was, everyone agreed and Alfred Sloan ended the meeting, that he said that no one is disagreeing, you know, so there is no point of having a meeting, correct? And are, are we like appointing boards which are too comfortable, which are too cozy? And, you know, even if they are going through a certain independent process, but are, or are, as Mr. Shiv Kumar pointed out, are the boards competent enough? Or rather, you know, the right composition, not competent, the right composition to bring in that value? Because you don't want an average board because you don't want average output in your organization. If many times I, we, you know, I think about companies like, for example, you look at JP Infratech or you look at Unitech, where possibly there were no independent boards. or, and there was just one person who had the My Way or the Highway. And actually, it, it would have helped that person itself, you know? Someone would have put a control, someone would have put different views into that thing. When like, for example, I represent I M T and when I take out policies among my faculty members and many people voice their views and sometimes I joke that it is almost like any new policy is like bringing a bill in the parliament, so much in my own faculty is giving opinion. But many of my senior people say that, yes, that's fine, but then that enriches the entire process. You know, so if, if the boards are one which are cozy, then possibly they may not be the right ones in the sense that they should encourage a lot of debate and opinions, of course not disruptive opinions, of course not unnecessary debate, but a lot of different point of views to enrich, enrich and balance the, you know, the, the kind of organization that we want to have. So particularly balancing between the long term and the short term, you know, and balancing among the different, different stakeholders and communicating to them, you know, communicating to them on a regular basis. And communicate, communicating could be couple of types, you know, one could be essential which is required as a part of a board or the other could be empathetic, you know, because you require to communicate why you are making those decisions. You, the regulators may not ask you for that, but still you may like to communicate to your stakeholders that different, different decisions you are taking so that they, they build trust and then also earnest communication that if there is a conflict of interest, if there are certain challenges they are facing and in those challenges they are making decisions, are they communicating all those things? So effectively, that's what I feel should be a right part of stakeholder engagement, engaging all the stakeholders in the right way is an essential part of a board. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Sarin, for highlighting the, the need for balancing between the different stakeholders and also the need for balancing long-term and short-term goals. We are getting great insights from the speakers and besides economic challenge, we are also facing time challenge and we are running behind schedule. And I'm going to implement the advice given by them, previous speakers, the need for agility and adaptability. We, I had planned to ask more questions, but I'm going to change the plan and probably open up for, you know, questions from you. And also I'm managing risk because I don't want to stand between you and the dinner to my own risk management. So I just want to open for a few questions from the audience, we'll take a few questions and then the audience, people are here, we can network during the dinner and then we can have more questions while networking, if it is okay with you. We'll take a few questions now. Yes, please, here. Please be very, you know, brief and then tell us whom you want, to whom it is, you know, addressed.
My name is Dr. Gurunath, Post Doctor Department, Sinavasun City, Mangalore, Karnataka. On account of having public money and public policies imbalance, on account of this, how board can solve this problem? For example, state governments are given free transport facility to all women people. Now there is no business for transportation people. All those accounts become N P A for public banks and private banks and all N B Fs. Now how board can act in a manner to see, satisfy all the people? How it is possible? Nobody is mushrooming the N P S accounts in the transport department. They are sanctioning free facility for all women's transportation facility in state government. According to that, private people are not going to having any business in the transportation department. All those accounts become, are turning to self-N P A made by the government policies. Government, public money has to be recovered as a banker. Bankers, public are, they are in a very dilemma position to see how board can act in a position to see either to direct the government or not possible or to go against to it. I think it's very difficult for it. I think the nominee directors of Reserve Bank of India or regulating agencies have to give very perfect report to the government authorities before implementing any policies or amending any policies. It is very good. In case of medicine, they will go for medical trial, like they go for business trial or economic trial, then only it is something we can find. Thank you, sorry for.
Thank you so much for sharing your thoughts. Thank you. Anyone, anyone wants to comment on this?
I am K N Mishra.
Yeah.
I was with Tata Group of Companies. Right now I am Secretary General of Indian Tin Plate Manufacturers Association. All the panelists and previous speakers have very rightly explained about various things, particularly about risk management and all. Since I come from basically a manufacturing company, I think risk is right from availability of raw material to processing, to packing, to, 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 uh, uh, marketing. Risk is also there for lending money, risk is there for supplies. So therefore, it should be regularly monitored and mitigated. Mitigation is very important. So I thought, you know, mitigation of risk.
Thank you. And you're, you want to comment? Yes, Mr. Singh, yeah?
Absolutely. And I think, look, the, the value out of your E R M program comes only because of the mitigation. Like it's not about listing the risks which are there, it is about building strong mitigants so that you can reduce your overall risk exposure. And the success of the program lies that it is like a continuum, right? From high risk, you move to a medium risk to a low risk, right? That's how your risk profile changes if you have the right mitigants placed. I absolutely agree with what you said.
Thank you. And we can just take one more.
I'd just add on one point to this. That why the risk has increased over time when we talk about companies? This is sometimes done deliberately also. The structuring of many companies have become so complex and the board of, even the board fails to understand what is going on in the company. There are so many companies with the size is very big and no one is aware that how the things are managed. In case of I L F S, no one was aware that how many subsidiaries I L F S Group had. In case of Enron, there were more than one hundred S P Es and no one could, able to understand what is the related party transactions between Enron and special purpose entities. The investors were thinking that risk has been diversified, has been controlled, but the fact of the matter was that risk remained with the company itself. So sometimes what happens is that deliberately the structuring is made so complex, the products through which the funds are raised are made so complex. In case of Lehman Brothers also, the complex kind of products were introduced, that it becomes very difficult to recognize those risks. So I think that if we have the conventional wisdom and try to make the business as simple as possible, this is one of the possible answer which to my mind should be arrived at. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We can just take one more question because we are just running out of time. Yes, please.
I'm not addressing this to any specific member of the panel, but my question is general. What, and we have seen many a times promoter and organizations, the board behaves very differently. And some of the challenges that come in a promoter and organizations, you know that the board manages to kind of get convinced by the promoter. What's the view of the panel on that? And there are enough stories about and enough information about promoter and organizations and the board that is being managed over there. So what's the view?
I think the answer lies in how you are identifying your directors. So I think if your directors are competent and people of stature, I think the, the probability of them getting influence easily is slightly lesser. If you're just filling a position of an independent director and you're doing it, maybe that's more of a possibility. So I think the answer relies in whom you are choosing your independent director is and as many of the panelists and many of the other speakers said, if it's just a, a kind of a family member or a friend or something, then there is high likelihood of compromising on that. So whom you choose is very important. That's what I think. You want to add?
Just to add, I think companies with boards which are like self-serving, if I can use that term, have, they are at very high risk because really the role of the board is to be, you know, to provide guidance, to identify where things could go wrong and make sure those are corrected. So the highest risk are, I would think, are boards which are self-serving, where the promoters are driving what the decision-making should be.
Thank you, Mrs. Yen.
Ma'am, to me, the things are changing now in the promoters-controlled companies. There was a time when board meeting used to happen only for ten, fifteen minutes. And at that time, the minutes of the meeting used to be drafted by the company secretary and the directors were asked to sign on the dotted lines. Now the meetings are structured, the agenda of the meeting is given in advance to the board members and lot of discussions also take place in the board meeting. All the committees are in place, especially the audit committee, it has become very powerful also. All the financials are discussed, there's a discussion with the auditor also. So things are changing. The promoters, the family promoter groups have also recognized the importance of managing the company through a professional board. So I think that it's not so bad that things have changed in India also in other parts of the country. For example, in Malaysia, the companies used to be managed by families called Chabuls. Chabuls are changing. In Japan, there used to be a structure called Karate Zoes, which used to manage the group of all the conglomerates. The Karate Zoes are also changing. The audit at that particular time even was not compulsory. Now the things are changing for the better. Thank you.
Thank you very much and. Yes, please, yes, be quick.
Talking about risk and I'm sure you find the whole, you find the whole room pretty depressing when you talk about risk. In your region, is, is risk taken with a bit of excitement today's context?
Well, I think you always have to view risk as an opportunity for sure. And that's the, the key. And I think it was mentioned before, but the risk appetite within the organizations and understanding what, what that is, is absolutely key to be able to do that with confidence. And, you know, as H C C A, we do it ourselves and there are some things that we absolutely will not compromise on and there are other things we're very willing to take a risk because, and that generally is where the future of the organization lies. So sorry, I'm peeping strangely around this lectern. So I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's different between Europe and Asia or Africa. I think that good boards and good organizations understand their risk appetite and they see risk as an opportunity.
Thank you, Helen. And thank you all. Given the time constraint, we have to bring to close and just wanted to take this opportunity to thank all the panelists for being here, you know, sharing their insights and experience with us. I think we had a very good discussion today and boards have got enough tips and advices not only survive but thrive in this challenging times. Thank you all.
Big, big round of applause for our speakers for a group photograph. I would request Mr. Manoj Roth, CEO and Secretary General Institute Directors, to kindly stay back and propose the vote of thanks.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. To propose a vote of thanks before such a discerning audience is extremely special and a privilege. On behalf of I O D India, I would like to take this opportunity to express my heartfelt gratitude to each and every one of you who have graciously participated in this special evening session here today. And this is an association, we cherish it over the years, moreover, as a family. I am personally grateful to CEO Helen Brand for sparing her valuable time and to be among us. As always, see lights up the arena with our graceful participation and with an inspiring speech. Ladies and gentlemen, Helen, whenever she visits India, she gives us a special day for us and to spend time with our I O D family, we are extremely grateful to you. And these days, navigating challenges is quite a bodgeword. I think we have been debating, deliberating at every platform. I want to express our sincere appreciation to all our distinct speakers for generously sharing their valuable insights, expertise and enriching our knowledge and also sparking thought-provoking discussions. My special thanks to Ajit Jee and Sandeep, who has been creating, making it all ready to host this beautiful session. And my sincere thanks also to my team, Board Research and Advisory Wing, led by Sana Legima and Vashal, for putting together such a wonderful program here for all of us. My deep gratitude to all our I O D family members and guests for your enthusiastic participation and also contributing to the vibrant atmosphere of knowledge sharing and networking. I think as we focus on building future boards, resilient boards, strategic boards, there are three key focus areas, what I could conclude, we need to focus and I think that will remain as a key priority for the boards for the rest of our financial year. All about navigating challenges, geopolitical and economic conditions. And number two, for the boards, the key priority will be rethinking capital allocation strategy to support the company's net zero ambitions. And third one, it's all about enacting sustainability, transformation and corporate reporting. We are eagerly looking forward to your continued support in the future and hope to see you again at our upcoming event very soon. Our next annual global convention is in Mumbai at Hotel Tajlands and that is on December twenty first and twenty second, just before Christmas, which is just less than two months from now. And that is international, eighteenth international conference on C S R. And this year, the theme is C S R and exploring evolution of E S G in the new world economy. And there, we are also going to felicitate the famed Golden Peacock Awards for C S R, H R excellence and innovation management during the convention. So thank you once again. And now dinner is ready. May I invite you all to join us for dinner? Have a nice evening. Thank you.